Meeting to order, it is March 5th, 2024. This is a city council study session. And we will start, please, with a roll call.
Councillor Woodruff.
President.
Mayor Per Tambule.
Councillor Yazi.
Here.
Mayor Youssef.
Here.
And Councillor Bosmans.
President.
All right, we will start with jumping into our agenda. Jose, I'm going to pass it to you.
Sure, be happy to do so. Just as a little bit of an announcement, we did change to kind of come back up to the dais because we're doing presentations and monthly reports. Being down there, we're seeing a lot of having to like turn and twist heads. It's probably a little easier to do it here. So that's the switch on the way of the seating format for this part. And we will start with our first one, which is affordability and economic opportunity, our community development monthly report with Scott Shine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Scott Shine with the Community Development Department. Pleased to be here to give you an update on activities in January in the Community Development Department. We've organized our slides around the three divisions in community development, so development services, housing innovation, and then economic opportunity. And I will say, I'll show you your first slide with some raw numbers here. We're excited to continue kind of refining this and rounding out this information as we build these monthly reports. I have some of that here that I can share with you verbally, but we're going to look for ways to really wrap in what these numbers regarding our outputs equate to as far as outcomes, as dollars invested in the community, units created, those types of numbers that really help you show that this activity directly feeds into your strategic plan goals and direction that you've given us. So some raw numbers for you here on this slide to reference and just get a sense of scale. The 18 permits issued in January represent $309,000 worth of new investment in the community. That relates to in January of '23, we had 27 permits issued. So a little bit more volume. I did go back though and look and a lot of those were smaller remodels or tenant finish. So again, just kind of nuancing this data with, it may be a smaller number, but more value because you have one or two really large projects or more volume, but smaller value. So I'll try and provide some context when we report on these numbers so that you get a sense of what this means as far as impact to the community. As far as certificates of occupancy, those are the, that's the goal line that builders are looking for when they get their permit issued. So we issued eight residential certificates of occupancy. Five of those were units at the Animus City Park Overlook Townhomes. And two of those five certificates of occupancy had a workforce housing deed restriction on them. So really pleased to see those now occupied and designated for the long-term benefit of our community. The two commercial permits represent, or certificates of occupancy represent 14,500 square feet of commercial space that was improved. The biggest one of those was 12,900 square feet at the Old Big Picture High School building. So that was one of the bigger certificates of occupancy in January. Quickly related to some upcoming projects in development services, we're very excited to be hosting our first round of development review roundtables next week, Monday and Friday. We're welcoming in sort of our most frequent customers, engineering firms, planning consultants, developers, builders, and other people to hear about some of the improvements we've made in community development as far as customer service and process improvement. We're going to share out with them all that work that's been done and take feedback on that and also help guide them to this is how you can make sure your application is successful. If you get us all this information upfront, it's going to go a lot smoother for you. So I really am excited about that. We've been partnering with Public Works to design those roundtables and make sure those are really informative and helpful. So we'll look forward to reporting back on those in April on how that goes. Looking further ahead, we're going to launch our Open Gov permitting software in June or July of this year. Again, a major process improvement step regarding development review. That's going to have a lot more transparency, a lot of web-based interface. So we can provide our services around the clock for people who want to access information that way, pay fully online, submit fully online, and go to digital reviews. So that'll be a great milestone. Again, another partnership with Public Works and also with Finance and the City Manager's Office to help us get the resources to launch that software, which will be light years ahead of where we are now. And again, further out, looking towards into summer and fall, we're working on some pretty impactful code updates related to our parking requirements and lighting standards. We're working with Visit Durango and some other stakeholders on a dark sky certification for Durango and looking to align our standards with that effort. Moving into the Housing Innovation Division, I wanted to first start by highlighting the website here or the webpage. Eva and the housing team have done a lot of great work to get information up there. Things like residential projects that are in review, the number of units in those projects, where they're at in the process. All of that is available on that webpage. So I can't cover all that now, but if you're interested or if the public's interested, please visit that webpage. In January, we executed three partnership agreements with some of our core partners, Homes Fund, Housing Solutions, and the Regional Housing Alliance. They provide services to us in regards to deed restriction monitoring, helping with rental programs. And the Regional Housing Alliance helps us to step back and get more of a regional view of the problem that we're facing in housing and looking at solutions at that scale. As I shared with you at the joint meeting last week, we have a draft of the Three Springs Development Agreement, which we're digging into and will bring forward for review and consideration by council in the next few months. And in January, Durango Crossing and Elk Grove Developments were approved, and that equates to over 200 new housing units once that those two developments are built out. Durango Crossing, as you know, has a significant percentage
And meeting to order, it is March 5th, 2024. This is a city council study session and we will start please with a roll call.
Councillor Woodruff.
President.
Mayor Pertan Buell. Councillor Yasi.
Here.
Mayor Youssef.
Here.
And Councillor Bosmans.
President.
All right, we will start with jumping into our agenda. Jose, I'm going to pass it to you.
Sure, be happy to do so. Just as a little bit of an announcement, we did change to kind of come back up to the dais because we're doing presentations and monthly reports. Being down there, we're seeing a lot of having to like turn and twist heads. It's probably a little easier to do it here. So that's the switch on the way of the seating format for this part. And we will start with our first one, which is affordability and economic opportunity, our community development monthly report with Scott Shine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Scott Shine with the Community Development Department. Pleased to be here to give you an update on activities in January in the Community Development Department. We've organized our slides around the three divisions in community development. So Development Services, Housing Innovation, and then Economic Opportunity. And I will say, I'll show you your first slide with some raw numbers here. We're excited to continue kind of refining this and rounding out this information as we build these monthly reports. I have some of that here that I can share with you verbally, but we're going to look for ways to really wrap in what these numbers regarding our outputs equate to as far as outcomes, as dollars invested in the community, units created, those types of numbers that really help you show that this activity directly feeds into your strategic plan goals and direction that you've given us. So some raw numbers for you here on this slide to reference and just get a sense of scale. The 18 permits issued in January represent $309,000 worth of new investment in the community. That relates to in January of '23, we had 27 permits issued. So a little bit more volume. I did go back though and look and a lot of those were smaller remodels or tenant finish. So again, just kind of nuancing this data with it may be a smaller number, but more value because you have one or two really large projects or more volume, but smaller value. So I'll try and provide some context when we report on these numbers so that you get a sense of what this means as far as impact to the community. As far as certificates of occupancy, those are the, that's the goal line that builders are looking for when they get their permit issued. So we issued eight residential certificates of occupancy. Five of those were units at the Animus City Park Overlook Town Homes. And two of those five certificates of occupancy had a workforce housing deed restriction on them. So really pleased to see those now occupied and designated for the long-term benefit of our community. The two commercial permits represent, or certificates of occupancy represent 14,500 square feet of commercial space that was improved. The biggest one of those was 12,900 square feet at the Old Big Picture High School Building. So that was one of the bigger certificates of occupancy in January. Quickly related to some upcoming projects in Development Services. We're very excited to be hosting our first round of Development Review Round Tables next week, Monday and Friday. We're welcoming in sort of our most frequent customers, engineering firms, planning consultants, developers, builders, and other people to hear about some of the improvements we've made in community development as far as customer service and process improvement. We're going to share out with them all that work that's been done and take feedback on that and also help guide them to this is how you can make sure your application's successful. If you get us all this information upfront, it's going to go a lot smoother for you. So I really am excited about that. We've been partnering with Public Works to design those round tables and make sure those are really informative and helpful. So we'll look forward to reporting back on those in April on how that goes. Looking further ahead, we're going to launch our Open Gov permitting software in June or July of this year. Again, a major process improvement step regarding Development Review. That's going to have a lot more transparency, a lot of web-based interface, so we can provide our services around the clock for people who want to access information that way, pay fully online, submit fully online, and go to digital reviews. So that'll be a great milestone. Again, another partnership with Public Works and also with Finance and the City Manager's Office to help us get the resources to launch that software, which will be light years ahead of where we are now. And again, further out, looking towards into summer and fall, we're working on some pretty impactful code updates related to our parking requirements and lighting standards. We're working with Visit Durango and some other stakeholders on a dark sky certification for Durango and looking to align our standards with that effort. Moving into our, the Housing Innovation Division, I wanted to first start by highlighting the website here or the webpage. Eva and the housing team have done a lot of great work to get information up there. Things like residential projects that are in review, the number of units in those projects, where they're at in the process, all of that is available on that webpage. So I can't cover all that now, but if you're interested or if the public's interested, please visit that webpage. In January, we executed three partnership agreements with some of our core partners, Homes Fund, Housing Solutions, and the Regional Housing Alliance. They provide services to us in regards to deed restriction monitoring, helping with rental programs. And the Regional Housing Alliance helps us to step back and get more of a regional view of the problem that we're facing in housing and looking at solutions at that scale. As I shared with you at the joint meeting last week, we have a draft of the Three Springs Development Agreement, which we're digging into and will bring forward for review and consideration by council in the next few months. And in January, Durango Crossing and Elk Grove Developments were approved and that equates to over 200 new housing units, once that those two developments are built out. Durango Crossing, as you know, has a significant percentage of those that are committed workforce units. Looking ahead, I'll go to the second bullet, the Twin Buttes Housing Compliance Agreement is on your agenda for tonight. That represents a lot of work that's gone into negotiating with the Twin Buttes developer and getting a compliance agreement that gives us assurance that we're getting a good benefit for the community and gives a developer assurance about what they're committing to going forward. You'll hear a lot more about that tonight, but that's a very exciting milestone on a major development in the community. We'll be bringing fair share program updates to the Community Development Commission and Council in March, April, May timeframe. And we continue to participate with the Economic Development Alliance in their Catalyst Fund efforts and like I mentioned, the Regional Housing Alliance. Last, the Economic Opportunity Division was able to launch the application program for the bump outs for this year. So that's out. If you get questions about that, you can point them to the website or have them get in touch with Tommy Crosby. That has been a collaboration with Fire Protection District and again, Public Works to really make sure that's done safely. The Economic Opportunity Incentive Policy will be coming before you probably in April. I think you'll remember when we heard the results of the community survey, sort of economic opportunities, economic development was kind of a focus of the responses. And this is going to be a great tool for us to be a little more proactive in supporting local economic development that lines up with, with priorities and goals that the community has, has told us they want to see. So again, more information coming on that. We'll do a more detailed presentation at a regular meeting, but that relates to tools as far as tax rebates or other things that we can do in regards to job creation or new investment in the community. Tommy's been working a lot on a business navigator program and setting that up to be bilingual so that all members of our community can help navigate the process for launching a new business. And then this is just a reference, this will be probably be an indicator we report back on for fiscal year 2024. These four grant programs or investment programs have a total of about $808,000 that we're looking to directly inject into projects in the community, people improving their properties, arts and culture programming, or other public art, those types of things. And Tommy again has done a great job setting up systems to make sure these are being effective and that we're tracking the outcomes. So I just wanted to plant that seed for future reports that will be sharing how those dollars are being spent. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Comments from council? Well, I just want to say that I, I'm so thankful to see the work on the application and review process. I know it's been an issue for so long, so thank you so much for your diligent efforts there and the efforts at really making really sure that the people, the applicants know exactly what information you guys need to make this as smooth as possible. I know this has been an issue for so long, so thank you so much for really, really working on that. I think it'll go a long way with the community. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do not have a diversity, equity, and inclusion cross-functional team report this month. So up next is our Transportation Department report with Sarah Hill.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. Sarah Hill, Transportation Director. I'm going to do a few highlights from our Transit and Multimodal Divisions for this month and give parking a break. So I also wanted to just highlight some of the ridership numbers and the usage that we're seeing on Transit. These numbers are from January and they compare January 2024 numbers to the same timeframe last year. And you can see on the right side here, this is representative of our trolley route. And in the community, trolley and bus are kind of used interchangeably. But fun fact, trolley actually does refer just to the main avenue trolley. And then our loop routes are our bus routes, which are shown here on the left-hand side. So the red is our 2024 ridership. We gave over 34,000 rides just in January, system-wide. And then in green, you can see the ridership from last year. So we're looking at about a 10% ridership increase overall for, for January. And this marks our 31st consecutive month of increased ridership from the year prior. The trolley ridership hit 12,999 rides exactly in January. And then the loop routes represent our Walmart, Mercy, Fort Lewis, 160, and Cresview routes. So that would be the remainder of our ridership there. Then this graph shows the ridership on our on-demand evening Durango service. And as you can see, it is on a upward trajectory. This is a report from our launch date in October through the end of January, but we just got our February numbers in a couple of days ago and we gave our highest ridership yet in February. So January here, we did 890 rides and then February, we did 1,077. And our February ridership return users are represented, representing 59% of our ridership. So we have a really good mix of first-time riders and people who are beginning to rely on it as a, as their form of transportation. We continue to receive really positive feedback and I wanted to actually read two that I pulled from this past month. The first is from Oak Tree Youth Resources that says, "Thank you for the Durango program. This has been such a great support for more youth to be employed and have transportation after 8:00 PM. We appreciate the opportunity." And then the second says, "I play on the local pool billiards league. One of our longtime players told me last night that Durango was a life changer for him. He can't drive, no license or car, but loves to go out and play pool with his friends. He always relied on rides from others, but felt bad. He said now he can get out and go socialize without worrying about how he'll get home." So this is just a really awesome impact immediately and we're excited to see continued growth on that. In response to some feedback and requests that we've gotten from the ridership, we're actually going to expand the hours of operation. So instead of operating from 8:00 PM, it's going to be operating from 5:00 PM until midnight daily, and that will be effective on March 11th. So the zero emission vehicle plan for transit. Colorado has a goal of having at least 1,000 EV buses and transit fleet by the year 2030 and striving to have 100% transition to EV by 2050. And that also mirrors our goals in the EV readiness plan. A ZEV transition plan is a requirement federally in order to apply for funding for low or no emissions vehicles. So we have to have this in place in order to get grant funding. We did receive two grants last year totaling $80,000 to develop this plan and there's no local match. So we are fully funded to have this plan developed. It's currently underway and we have received our first recommendations report, which recommends that we pursue battery electric technology versus hydrogen fuel cell, just based on our remoteness and the cost to implement that technology. But the next steps of this plan are going to be fleet analysis, they're going to take a really deep look on our fleet needs, our weather, our topography, and what the impact of electrification will be on our service. They're going to provide financial analysis and a step-by-step transition plan to get us to full compliance. And we're partnering with LPEA to roll this out. Also, I will have, we hired HDR is the firm that's developing this plan for us, and I will have their experts develop the final draft of the plan, present it to you for adoption later this summer. And then our multimodal update, the photos here on the right are from Winter Bike to Work Day in early February, and it was a very cold snowy morning and we had really great participation. So I wanted to highlight multimodal divisions work on that one. And then these projects listed here are currently funded CIP projects. So I wanted to step through a real quick status update so you know where we are on these projects. So the collagen eighth safety project is a road diet. You probably remember this one because it's been on the books since about 2017. We have a full design and we've gone out to bid for construction three times. We did not receive bids those times, but we have partnered with the Streets Division to lump a road reconstruction project along with that and hoping that that's going to be more attractive to contractors, especially as we're getting out of some of the delays that we saw as a result of COVID. So that bid closes April 8th. There were 10 attendees at the pre-construction meeting, so that gives us some hope that there are people interested in the project. For the Midtown Safety and Connectivity Project, as you all know, we're moving forward with design of two options for the malfunction junction and appreciate your support on moving forward on that one. Downtown's Next Steps, staff really pounded the pavement and did a lot of outreach to business owners downtown. We have received our 30% design plans from the consultant. And our first public meeting to get feedback will be March 14th at 5:30 at the FLC Innovation Center, which is upstairs in the main mall. We're really looking forward to getting good feedback from the community on that one. And Devin King will also be presenting to bid on the high-level concept of those plans at the March 8th meeting. Camino Crossing, we submitted a grant application for funding for construction of this project. Rusak Connect, we're working on crossing our Ts and dotting our Is with some environmental and hydrologic, hydrological studies for finalizing design of that one. North Main ADA improvements, we are getting close to a full corridor plan set draft that will be going to CDOT and they'll be providing us with a construction cost estimate so we can make some plans of finalizing the construction of that project. And again, as a reminder, that project is improving sidewalk and intersections like curb ramps up to transit stops all along North Main from 17th Street up to 32nd, or sorry, beyond that, Animus Street Drive. Junction Street Traffic Calming, we are reaching 60% design after a really successful public outreach phase. And the West Park Avenue Traffic Calming is the, the last design project on the list this year, and that RFP will be going out for design later this year. That's all I have.
It's good that's, that's all you have because you have a lot on your plate. Excellent. I have one question. On Durango, on Durango, exclamation mark, how are we funding that again?
That is funded through a 5311 federal program. It's an expansion grant to our operating grant that funds our general operations and it was rolled into future allocations of our funding. So it is sustainably funded into the long-term as long as those allocations hold.
Through grant funding at the state level. Wonderful. Thank you. Other questions, comments from council? Go ahead.
Does that grant funding have to be applied for year over year? Or is that something that's like a two-year grant?
Well, it's, it's a formula funding from our federal transit operating program. So that has been approved by the Transportation Commission and passed down to CDOT to administer. So yeah, as long as those formulas remain in place, then that, that's what we can expect to receive for transit operating.
Is that 100% of?
Not 100%. We do have a 20% local match. So that comes from, you know, our general revenues that come to the Transportation Enterprise Fund, which is parking tickets and lodgers' tax and some of those contracts.
And remind me, it's, it's only a couple of bucks, right? For?
Two dollars a ride.
Two dollar rides. Wow, that's remarkable. And, and what a great opportunity to, you know, advocate for public safety too, for, for people to get home after the ridership closes for the rest of the trolley at 8 o'clock. I had something else. And you said the 14th at 5:30 at the Center for Innovation for the next step. Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you so much, Sarah.
Um, thank you, Sarah. That's real impressive, all the work you're, you're getting done. I want to know, just, you can just tell me briefly, what is included in a 30% design plan set, set for the Downtown Next Steps program?
So that'll be the general outline of, you know, what the project will entail. We haven't gotten into the real serious engineering detail yet, but it does have turning radius considered and, you know, it's, it's kind of the overall rec, the proposal for what the layout looks like. And it's been, it's been explored for engineering feasibility. So it's beyond a drawing. There's definitely engineering considerations there, but we haven't gotten deep under, you know, the ground to look at what's under the ground. Yeah, I hope that cleared it up. I'm not an engineer, so they could, they could describe that better.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the update.
Next up, we have Alison Baker for the Public Works Department report.
Good afternoon, councillors and mayor. Sarah's a little taller. So today I'd like to update you on the Public Works Department for January of 2024. We're talking about the effective infrastructure network and working to improve that. We start with Streets Division, whose primary work in January was snow and ice removal by snow plowing and then hauling to storage. The snow loads that were removed in 2023 were 1,170 loads, which is a pretty stupendous amount. This year in January was a little more reasonable at 692, so 59% of what we did in 2023. A relatively small number of potholes, 46, were repaired and that will continue in the springtime. No street sweeping occurred during snow removal months. Trash and recycle collections continue as per normal. We are working with some private roads who have received delayed servicing due to the fact that some of their designs had excess grades or inadequate plowing. And we're working with homeowners associations to make those more accessible. The Recycle Center in 2023, January, the tons that were hauled to Albuquerque Municipal Facility to be recycled were 207. During the same period in 2024, for January, we hauled 240. 116% of what we had hauled in 2023. Upcoming, which is now, now and ending, the Recycle Center will be closed for Baylor Rehabilitation in February, and it actually just opened again today. So in the real, in the two, two months forward version of the world. In engineering, we continue review of large developments, including housing sites at Elk Grove and Twin Buttes, Mercy Medical Office Building, and Crater Development Utilities. Construction inspection continues. Stormwater compliance inspections are an important part of the work that is done by engineering. In 2023, there were 11 inspections with one notice of violation, producing a 9% failure rate. In 2024, there were nine inspections in January with two notice of violations, which was a 22% failure rate. So that has actually increased 13%. Stormwater compliance does, our management group does significant outreach as part of our MS4 permit to educate contractors and developers so we don't have notices of violation. Fab presentation for 2019 Sales Tax Prioritization Plan was prepared in January for review in February. And finally, oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Water treatment. This, this one's actually kind of interesting. The gallons treated of water for potable water in January of 2023 were 60 gallons. In 2024, it had increased to 73.06 million gallons, approximately 1% increase. Meanwhile, the sewer treatment in January of 2023 was 44.8 million gallons and reduced in January of 2024 to 42.98 million gallons, which was a drop as opposed to the increase that we saw in the water treatment. Most likely this was due to irrigation and the snowmelt and infiltration, but it certainly prompts us to look around carefully for leaks. Meanwhile, the collections and distribution, in addition to their normal maintenance activities during January of 2023, had 36 callouts for service. And January of 2024 had 47 callouts for service. And January of twenty twenty four had forty seven callouts for service. Our C I P Construction Management in January, twenty twenty four updates. The completed projects, big picture, was approximately a hun one point two million dollars. The storage tanks, control panels for two water tanks was approximately three hundred seventy two thousand dollars. In progress, we have the Thirty Second Street Storm Sewer Pond at about thirty percent complete. The pickleball courts are roughly seventy five to eighty percent complete and shut down for winter. The College Mesa Filter Effluent to Waste System is approximately eighty percent complete. And soon to start, we have two, two large projects. I have inadvertently reversed the numbers. The correct numbers, North College Utility Paving Reconstruction is three point eight six million dollar commitment from the city. And County Road two fifty, two fifty one paving and hardscape reconstruction is five point oh six million dollars, which is the four point four million that everybody has in mind, plus fifteen percent for contingency and C I P. Awarding and coming soon are common threads. We're negotiating with potential contractor approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And Eighth Avenue and College Road Diet and Repaving are approximately one point five three million dollars. So those will be bidding soon. And that completes the Public Works Update. Are there any questions that I can answer? Questions, counsel?
Yeah, thanks, Allison. The common threads, I thought we had the the local guy locked in. What's the status for completing that or getting that project up and running?
I I do not have dates for that. My understanding was that we were still in negotiations about some insurance issues. I can look into that and get you more detail.
Okay, no worries. I just know it's it's been a long time in coming. I think people are, as we all are, ready for that project to see the sunset. And then we said you had forty six potholes fixed for this year, which is great. Do we know, are any of the plow trucks, are there any sidewalk issue or curb issues that that need to be rectified at all?
I have seen curb damage that we've incurred over the year, over the year, and we tend to patch those in the springtime once the pay, once the plowing is done.
Okay.
But you're talking about the chips on the corners.
Yeah, chips in the corners. I mean, there's some other that are a little bit larger. I wasn't sure if that was for that whole pothole.
There were repair process. Yes, sir.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? I concur on common threads. You know, the minute we know what's going on with common threads, if we could even get it pressed at least out to the community, you know, just keep people informed because it's such a, an issue we've been waiting for for so long.
Let me get more information on that. I know it's a very visible and highly anticipated project. So I'll do that and I'll get it to you as quickly as possible.
It'll be so great once it's, if we can get it updated.
Yes.
I think everyone's looking forward to it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, Mayor, we have Tony Vaccari with the Aviation Department's report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tony Vaccari, Aviation Director at the Durango La Plata County Airport with our standard monthly report. Just first, a quick run through some overall activity metrics. These are through January. Passenger enplanements were up fourteen percent over twenty twenty three. That is more aggressive growth than we did forecast for January. We'll see how the year continues to play out, but so far we're building on an aggressive growth trend we saw in overall demand in twenty twenty three. And that was actually done on only a seven percent increase in airline seat capacity. So we saw an increase in overall load. So demand in the market remains very strong and resilient on that front. Continue to see strong demand for airport parking. Rental car revenues did slightly lag. That was driven primarily by price points that have fallen slightly in the rental car market in particular on that front. Terminal concession revenue was up quite aggressively. That's driven primarily by the success of our new food and beverage vendor, who's entered the market and stimulated additional sales, particularly post screening at the airport. We anticipate that increasing even more when we open the first phase of our terminal expansion project because that does include an additional additional concession space in the new United Gate area, increasing the overall exposure for that vendor and concessions at the airport. So look, look to see that number continue to outperform the baseline as we move through twenty twenty four. And then the two numbers that were slightly lagging, non-airline fueling, which is indicative of private aviation, general aviation traffic at the airport was down twenty percent year over year. So we did see a slight decrease in in G A traffic at the airport. And then also air freight volume was down slightly year over year. That's consistent with nationwide trends where we've seen decreases across the board in air freight worldwide over the last calendar year. Looking at this a little bit visually, this is just the in plane passengers. The the green dot is twenty twenty four. We don't have February final numbers just yet, but based on preliminary daily TSA data, it looks like we'll end up in a similar range of about ten to fourteen percent year over year increase on that. So starting off the first quarter of the year in a very strong position in terms of passenger traffic at the airport. Quick run through on twenty twenty four capital projects. Terminal expansion is probably the the most visual visual for the community overall. Phase one A of this project broke ground last April of twenty twenty three, and we're on track for a ribbon cutting event that is now officially scheduled for the tenth of April. Council should have that invite in your inbox. And we anticipate that that gate will become usable by United the next day on the eleventh of April. So opening up that new space. That won't constitute the end of phase one A. We have to then subsequently come back and demo the existing restrooms that are being replaced by the brand new restrooms that will be commissioned here shortly. And those will be replaced by family, two family restrooms and a mother's nursing room. So we still will have several more months of lingering construction in phase one A. But the preponderance of the new space will be available to the public. So we're very much looking forward to that on the phase one A side. With phase one B, which the council will remember is actually a significantly larger expansion project, we just received preliminary guaranteed maximum pricing from our construction manager, non-construction on this project. And we are currently working with them aggressively to move through what is a very large document in terms of evaluating pricing and subcontractor bids. The good news is that the preliminary budget figure is within budget, which is a phrase that is oftentimes not heard in the current bidding environment, or at least over the last handful of years, which is very good. We've worked very closely with non-construction through this process as a construction manager at risk in their contract. And they provided cost estimating with us throughout the design process. We've had to update and make some adjustments along the way. Our design development are approximately sixty percent design docs last fall did come in more expensive than anticipated. And we talked to the council at that point, letting you know that we did anticipate an increase based on off the appropriated budget. But we've helped, the good news is we've held firm since the September numbers through now. So that is a big win for us. So the council can expect to see us come forward with an additional appropriation, but this is just capturing the increases that we forecast last fall and previously expressed to the city council. But we are feeling very optimistic on that and remain on track to be able to break ground on phase one B later this summer after we execute state and federal grants that are also supporting the financing for this project. Couple other ones, we're upgrading the wastewater system at the airport. That project is is pending state approval on the plans, after which we'll bid that project and get under construction. And then also we'll be paving the upper overflow parking lot at the airport. If anyone's familiar with the credit card parking lot, it includes, we call it upper and a lower overflow lot. Those are unpaved rotor mill lots. Those have been in place for many, many years, and we're very excited to be paving that. We've bid and awarded that project, and we have a tentative construction date starting in mid-May. So we have a couple more months here of our unpaved conditions as we move through the remainder of the winter, and we'll be breaking ground and opening that up for paving here in May. So looking forward to that. We'll have some coordination pieces with the public to manage capacity during that timeline. We have a pretty good plan to be able to manage that through the construction period. Other than that, we continue to have moved forward with a number of smaller projects you can see listed on the right. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I don't have any major updates on those as they're not underway just yet for the year. Here's just a couple of photos of of phase one A construction. Again, we're very excited. You can see exterior finishes are totally complete at this point. Really, on the interior, I just walked through this morning on the site. Everything's coming together very nicely. We're putting up the the wood ceiling and the interior space. It's about fifty percent installed as of today, which is very nice looking interior space. We'll be moving forward with floor finishes, restroom finishes, et cetera, to to finish out this project ahead of that early April ribbon cutting. And lastly, just a quick check in on airline route network. No major changes overall. We continue to see stable flights from both United and American out of the market with Denver, Dallas, and Phoenix departures unchanged since our report last month. Just as a reminder, United is now running two daily Airbus A three nineteen, A three twenty mainline aircraft of their five daily departures. So forty percent of their daily departures are now on the larger hundred and twenty six to hundred and fifty seat aircraft, which has been a boon for seat capacity in the market this winter and is in the United schedule in perpetuity moving forward. And then lastly, we will see the resumption of Houston summer seasonal service starting Memorial Weekend on Saturdays and Sundays throughout the duration of the summer, again, on United. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
No questions? Question? Thank you so much for the update and all the hard work. Progress. Good progress. Thank you.
Next, Mayor and Council, we'll move on to enhanced livability and sense of place, and we have Parks and Recreation Department, Kelly Schmidt.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. Very excited to be here with you today. How's my volume? Okay? And forgive me as I kind of push through using all of our tools for the first time. So our January's Parks and Recreation Department updates feature will be aligning with the strategic plan goals of enhanced livability and sense of place. We're going to start off with our parks update with, excuse me, Smith Sports Complex. Staff is working with field user groups to allow for use of Smith Sports Complex fields during the spring and the fall. However, due to lack of irrigation for about a week this past summer, during high seasonality heat wave and also very, very heavy use, the fields are in really poor condition. So we're going to have to close them for this summer while we work with a turf expert to restore the field conditions. We'll reseed, and in order to do that, we've got to keep the traffic off of it while the regrowth happens. We're hoping to extend use and open back up in the fall. Update on Schneider Park. Concrete work is complete. The rest of the work, as mentioned before by Allison, will have to pause until April. The contractor, F C I, plans to complete the earthwork around the edges, install the Animus River Trail lighting, irrigation, and landscaping in the spring. And then we're hoping that the subcontractor will come in and complete the court surfacing installation once we have consistent temperatures above fifty degrees. We're hoping that will be completed by mid to late May. Excited to share that Chapman Hill. Sorry, folks. We're missing some slides. Okay, I'll just narrate and pretend that the next slide is a beautiful picture of Chapman Hill with a lot of fun snow images. We're just not there. Okay, we'll move on. We had a very busy year or busy month at Chapman Hill. Our revenues for twenty twenty four were twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy eight dollars higher than twenty twenty three same month. Staff contributes the factors of an increase in private ice skating as well as ski pass sales. They also implemented this year, is this, excuse me, a designated park crew that keeps the features and courses fresh and fun, which attracted a lot of new users. We're also very excited to convey that the lift and light replacement schedule is on track. We're hoping to implement that at the conclusion of the ski season. But in doing that, we have to say goodbye to a very cherished and longtime tool at the Chapman Hill Big Toe. Big Toe came to us in nineteen sixty six from Camp Hill. It was the tow rope used by the Tenth Mountain Division soldiers during their training for World War Two. To honor its years and years of service, we're going to have a big goodbye to Big Toe event at the conclusion of the season. The Big Toe was the lift used to start the ski hill. January Recreation Update, Recreation Center compared to twenty twenty three. We were down about fifty two passes. However, passes scanned were up five thousand three hundred and eighty for the month of January, and drop in daily use was up eighty two daily, or I'm sorry, five thousand eight hundred and twenty five, up eighty two daily entries from twenty twenty three. Total visits in twenty twenty four, the month of January, thirty five thousand four hundred and eleven. That was an average of eleven hundred users per day. And finally, in conclusion, we're going to talk a little bit about Snow Down. I've been told it was very successful this year. One thing the staff was really excited about was the deployment of our new vehicle stopping barriers. They were easily deployed and easily maneuvered for emergency vehicles when tested. They were placed along College Drive, east and west of Maine to protect the parade. Also, a share out, a little bit coming down the pipe. We have March thirtieth Easter egg scramble at Santa Rita Park. We're expecting about seven hundred people. We also have April nineteenth Arbor Day Celebration with a tree planting on the nineteenth, but activities will be happening all month. They'll be, they'll include a tree scavenger hunt, an art show at the rec center, and much more. We also have the four days of Fourth of July, July third through July sixth this year. We're expecting twenty five activities, same as last year, in collaboration with the Durango Chamber, the Business Improvement District, and the Laramore, sorry, the La Plata County Fairgrounds. We are actively looking for community members that would like to be on the Fourth of July Committee. So they'll just contact Ellen Babers, Events Administrator. Also sharing that we've got quite a few activity permits, park permits, ninety in progress, or already awarded. The department is averaging or expecting to average one hundred and fifty to one hundred and seventy five events this year. That involves permitting, equipment, and consulting and supporting those events. And last but not least, our banner space is almost completely sold out for the year. We have three locations, and that means we've got a hundred and fifty nine total. With only nine slots left, people are able to book these three hundred and sixty four days in advance. And I'd love to open up for questions and what I can't answer. I've got some team members here to assist.
Thank you so much for joining us. First of all, it's nice to see you here.
Thank you.
On the Big Toe Celebration, will you send council the dates and times of that?
You bet. I was just asking staff about a confirmation, and because the season can vary, we'll be holding it on the last day of the season, and we'll get that to you.
That would be so nice to see that. And when we replace that toe, can you remind us what we are replacing it with? Will it be a T-bar?
So I'm gonna.
A what? Like a Palma? So something? Okay, so it will be a Palma. It will have an assist going up versus holding on? Okay, great.
And one add to that, we have been working with other departments on possibly doing some kind of interpretive panel just to honor kind of the historical nature of how the the hill got started, where the toe came from, and that storytelling bit.
Yeah, it's a huge asset for our community, so that'll be a really great celebration. Thank you. Other questions, comments from council?
Well, welcome to the job and thank you for your presentation. I was curious. Okay, so the Smith Sports Complex field is going to be out of commission for most of the summer is, and that's just due to drought? Or was there like rodents went in there and grew? And are are there going to be sport teams that need to practice there? And where are they going to go?
So I'm going to hand it over to Scott to answer your question.
Hi, Scott McClain, Assistant Price Director. So typically, we close down the fields for maintenance at Smith for four to six weeks in the summertime, and we've scheduled it. That's that's the time when we have the lowest, the least amount of programming up there. So we kind of went back and forth on this year, whether we try to get ahead of it and do the maintenance in spring. But working with the user groups, this provides for all the groups, use sports and everything during their spring and fall seasons. And then we'll see how summer goes. And then we'll see how summer goes. We're, I think, hoping for less than the timeframe that we've indicated and that we can open it up sooner. But planning on more time than less, just in case.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What are we going to do with the Big Toe after we're done? Is it going to like be put in a museum somewhere?
I think it should be put in a museum somewhere. I've, I've heard different creative solutions around the community, but I don't think we've landed on a home for the Big Toe following its retirement.
Maybe we should auction off parts of the rope for something. Very special. Hang it in people's, you know, bedrooms and things.
We might be able to memorialize it somewhere within the ice skating rink.
And then lastly, it sounds like once the coating on the pickleball courts at Schneider Park go on, it'll be ready to use after the, that conditioner is finished. Is that, is that correct? Thank you.
Just going to keep Scott McLean up here.
Yes, that's, that's the last thing that'll need to happen. So and it's, I think, the two-day cure time on the coating. And then we've been working, Helen and I have been meeting with the pickleball association on getting set up for opening up to the public and be ready to go as soon as it comes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
As soon as we have dates locked in for ribbon cutting and all of the rest, we'll definitely share it out. Any questions? Thank you.
Next up, we have Chief Brammer for our Public Safety Report.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Bob Brammer, Chief of Police for the City of Durango. This is your January crime report. Last time I presented overall what the annual report was for 2023. So this is a catch-up from January as we're working our efforts moving forward. As a reminder to Council, Part One offenses are classified by the FBI as major crimes. There's basically seven categories. For the month of January, we had zero murders, one sexual assault, zero robberies, seven aggravated assaults, eight burglaries, fifty-one thefts or larcenies, and three motor vehicle thefts for a total of seventy. That's a slight uptick over years past. In my next slide, I'll be able to talk about that and show the trends on that because these are very interconnected to a specific group of people. So it's not as drastic as it looks of individual crimes. They're actually pretty well grouped together. If we look at the bar graph, we'll be able to see trending over time over the last four years. The one sexual assault that we did get was actually occurred in July of this last year. It just took six months for that person to come forward and report that. Of the aggravated assaults, two of those out of the seven were on our officers, so that trend is continuing. And of the burglaries, we had eight of those. But if we remember Red Snapper, there was thirteen people that were found trespassing in there, which were also conducting other types of crimes. That's why it was classified as a burglary itself, even though they were just habitating there for the most part. And also those same people were associated to the burglary that occurred at nine R, where the stage money or the counterfeit money was taken from that location and then found at that location, as well as trending into some of the theft crimes that we had because they were using that counterfeit money to spend across town to purchase items under false pretenses, which is classified as theft. So that's why the theft numbers are also up to a point. And then there was also twenty-two shopliftings under the theft category, and majority of those were the same individual. It was cited multiple times because it was petty theft, and hopefully that will be resolving itself pretty soon once they get to the point where they're going to become in front of our municipal court judge. And of the stolen vehicles, we had three. Only one of them was a real vehicle. Another one, one was a four-wheeler, and one was a backhoe. All three were recovered in that, through the course of those investigations and arrests were made in those as well. As we look at our traffic accidents, again, we're reporting our data differently now. So that's why it appears to be trending upwards, but we're just cleaning that data up. So all reports are not going through, or cold reports aren't going through the Colorado State Patrol's portal. They're all coming through ours, so we can count that a little bit better to affect better strategy moving forward. Our criminal efforts continue to focus on partnerships with municipal court. Again, this is January statistics, so a lot of these efforts that we're looking at are continuing to clean up a lot of the past warrants that were from 2023. We're starting to hear some positive effects on the street from the people that we're interacting with now because the judge is actually holding people accountable and he's actually seeing them in court. So we believe that these trends are going to start tapering off a little bit as people understand that, that they can't get away with the behaviors that they used to in the past. And also to note, in January, our Rangers and Code Enforcement have cleaned up and mitigated forty-five illegal camps. So forty-five camps, that's pretty significant for the month of January. We'll see where that number continues to trend a month, a month as we move into the typical season, as the weather warms up. And one other, two other things to note is our Citizens Police Academy starts this Thursday. We've got a great enrollment this year, so we hope that many of you, Mayor, you'll be invited as well to graduation at that point. But it should be a very good class, and it should be a good interaction to build, develop relationships within the community again. And we also fielded our first marked hybrid vehicle in our fleet. And we have, I believe, several more. I think there's eight more that are, that are being outfitted right now. So we'll see more and more of those come in online as we replace our Tahos. And also for a dispatch update, I've got Director Phil.
But before I forget, Chief, will you send that date again on the Police Academy?
Absolutely.
Citizens Police Academy celebration?
Yes.
I've seen a date before, but if you could remind me when it is, that would be helpful.
We have a letter that we'll be sending out to you and to the city manager.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm Zita Phail. I'm the Director of the nine-one-one Center. We've just started this year gathering some performance metrics that haven't been available in the past. But I thought I would share with you, we have some call statistics that have, we're able to go back to 2019. And you can see that while our calls received may have been reduced overall, you know, we had a six percent increase in the nine-one-one calls. And the law incidences and the fire incidents are up nine and twelve percent. It's significant to know how many of our calls are wireless because it takes longer for us to process those calls. You know, in the old days, you dialed nine-one-one from your house and we got your address, and now we get coordinates. So it takes a little bit longer, but you can see over the last four years that the Phase One wireless, which is a lot more room for error, have decreased, and we're getting more accurate from the Phase Two wireless. We are, we do monthly quality assurance on our EMD, our medical calls, law calls, and fire calls. And our goal is ninety percent. We're meeting that currently. Our answer times are in line with the National Emergency Number Association. In the percent, ninety, ninety percent answered within twenty seconds or less. Our goal is ninety-five percent, and we are meeting those. And then last August, we started a citizen survey that we do monthly. We receive approximately forty percent return on it, believe it or not. And we distribute any feedback that we get to our client agencies monthly so they can have that. And we consistently are scoring above the four-point-five mark out of five possible points. So we're going to continue to gather that data and forward that to our client agency so we can just keep our continuous improvement going. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Thank you for that report. You know, on the wireless calls versus the hard-line calls, how much time difference is there between doing one instant? Is it a lot, like half, you know?
Well, of course, in an emergency, every, every second counts. But there are standards that the Fire Department uses called NFPA standards that were established back when wirelines was what we had. And they required that we process the call within sixty seconds. And there are times in a wireless situation where it could take us sixty, ninety, up to two minutes to get that information, depending on where they are and how able the caller is to give us that information. So by and large, though, we are about to get a dashboard, statistical dashboard that we're going to publish to our client agencies and make it forward facing to the community. And you will be able to see how fast we are processing those calls. And our goal is going to be sixty seconds for priority one calls, which are the most emergent.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Do what?
Counselor Bosman says it's handled.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, Olivier. Counselor Bosmans.
Thank you for the presentation, Chief, and for the dispatch there. I apologize for not having the video on. It seems to be interfering with the quality of the transmission. I had a small question on the, for the chief. Has there been a change in, in your approach between issuing more warnings versus citations? Because it seems, or is it just a coincidence that they went up and down in a similar equivalent amount almost?
It's a great question, Counselor. There's a lot of data there, so it kind of depends on which approach that we're looking at. If it's related to traffic, we, or criminality, if it's a first-time offender, we try to go with an educational component to that, which entails a warning prior to taking an enforcement action. So right now, with a lot of the illegal camping, we're seeing a lot of influx of people coming into town that are new. So we're taking that as a warning opportunity to be able to educate them prior to taking any action.
Okay. Yeah, it just seemed on the traffic contacts that those numbers went up and down. Both the warnings went up and the citations went down in a similar amount. So was that a, a planned change, or is it just a coincidence? Because it's January, comparing it to last year's January.
Sure. When it comes to traffic, it's officer discretion. So a lot of that depends on what the violation is that they're contacting the violator for. If there are equipment violations, which typically happens at night, our DUI enforcement is up significantly right now. So officers are looking for reasons to pull people over. I believe that's probably what it's going to be entailing, is those equipment violations, trying to get people to get that fixed. And if there's a secondary violation, then that will be dealt with.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have our Library Services Department report, Luke Alvey Henderson.
Hi there, Council and Mayor. We're just pulling up here in a second. So as we did everyone else, we're talking about our January numbers. And there we are, almost great. So we also, of course, fall under enhanced livability and sense of place. What we've done with our trends that we're tracking is we're tying it directly to our customer service strategy that had four key processes, the four most important things we do for the public. And we break out metrics that chart those. And of course, on a quarterly basis, we'll talk to you about how close we are at that rate to meeting our annual goals. But month to month, we're just looking at our changes as a percentage over last year of January 2023. We start with collection, development, and circulation, which is how we build and maintain our physical and digital collection, but also how we encourage its effective use. That is our highest-rated service in all our surveys and probably will be for time of memorial, as I've said before. So we start with that. And in January, we purchased seven hundred new items. And there was a breakdown. As you see, it's a real, you know, jump around. But of course, physical books tends to be our main purchase. And our circulation was over twenty-nine thousand items. That is an increase of ten percent. So great start to the year. Programming and outreach, it's a great way to get people in the door the first time, and it's also a great way to get out where people are. We had thirty-three programs with over eleven thousand, I'm sorry, eleven hundred attendees. That's a sixty percent increase for our youth services. Seven programs for adults with two hundred and ninety-three, over a hundred and thirty percent increase. We just had one outreach program, which is our ongoing senior service, which is Cameron Square. I do want to highlight that picture there, though. If you didn't see it on our Facebook page about a month ago, that's Jules. He's from Haiti, and he was an orphan. And about three months ago, he moved to Durango. And in January, he attended his first Lego program. And that huge smile on his face is because it was the first time he was ever able to build whatever he wanted. Not by a kit, but just had so many Legos, he could build whatever he wanted. And since then, he has attended every single Lego program, has become one of our little helpers, helping build it up and take it down. And his smile on his face says more about what Youth Services does for library patrons and the community as a whole than I ever could. Then we get into patron support. That's the many ways we have direct assistance to patrons. What we're currently looking at right now is interlibrary loan requests. That's library requests from another library that come here, reference questions, and new cards added. We're also currently looking at if there's anything we're missing there and what other best in the field libraries are doing to look at that metric because we really want to like capture it fully. And reference questions and interlibrary loan requests, we saw a slight decrease over 2023. We tend to look at the success or of that trend on more of a quarterly basis because those two areas, there is just so much zigzagging around. For instance, we saw a decrease in December of last year, but we saw an overall fifteen percent increase in reference questions annually. So we look more on the larger trend on that. However, new cardholders really still keeping high numbers. We had three hundred and thirty-six new cardholders, and which was weirdly the exact same number we got in January of 2023. It's rare when we hit it right on the nose like that. That's another story right there. That's Larry. He is eighty-five years young, and that is his first public library card. He's been in a lot of legal libraries, he says. He's a retired attorney, but that's the first time he got a public one. And our last metric area we look at is library space, and that's everything else they do in the building besides checking things out and using our reference services and our programming. That is our most important metric overall because it's our key performance indicator for the city as an organization because we figure if they're coming into the building, they're probably using one of those other three services. What's interesting is there's things we just can't count right now. We haven't historically counted our study room use, so we haven't started to count it yet because we're looking at when we do a next big change. For instance, if we do a reservation system or add rooms, we'll start counting then or up to that, so we get a good metric. But another one we can't count is we have a lot of clubs who meet just in the physical space of the library without meeting a room, like our knitters or our mahjong players, and there's no way to really count that. What we do count is our visitors, total computer use, and public room reservations. And as you can see, all those numbers are up. The one interesting thing about our computer use is our use of our physical PCs keeps going down while our wireless use and printing keeps going up. So people are still using us as an office, just less, more and more they're bringing in their own equipment. And so we did see in 2023 a reduction of the number of PCs we have, which of course gives more space for the public and lowers our overall cost. And last but not least, our lovely library district. We did have some interesting conversations, both with the county and city joint session, but we also had multiple meetings of the Issues Committee. They are asking for a clarification from City Council, not this moment, of course, but in a near date of where the preferred timing is for a district ballot measure. Does it stay at 2024, or has it been moved to 2026? However, to give you some, you know, feedback on this, they decided that they could not elect a single officer position if it was a 2024 ballot because they unanimously agreed to recommend a 2026 district ballot based on some of the factors we've heard in meetings that you've brought up from your one-on-ones. People just now getting their numbers for their housing, and a lot of them going up. People not sure what's going to happen next year. They're worried that it's too crowded of a ballot. They're hearing some of the same things. It was some of their same reasoning. And so they made a unanimous recommendation for a 2026 ballot. They also unanimously recommended that they keep the same heading, which was to form a petition sometime in that timeline, bring it back to the county and the city, and to have then that petition be the justification for a joint resolution. That timeline of where that would change has not been set. The library is hoping to hold an April or May forum of some sort to get more information from the public, to start that conversation, what that timeline would look like. And that is all I have for today.
Thank you so much. Very informative. Other questions, comments from Council? I appreciate the update from the Issues Committee. Thank you so much.
Next up, Mayor and Council, moving on to environmental sustainability and resilience. We have Marty Poole for an Environmental Sustainability T Monthly Report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. Marty Poole, Sustainability Manager, here to give an update specifically to the work of the Sustainability Division. I do want to highlight, as we go through this update, that you've already been hearing so many updates from across our city divisions related to the work of updates from across our city divisions related to the work of environmental sustainability and resilience. So when we see increased transit ridership, that is a sustainability concern, you know, all the multimodal projects, the work of trash and recycle, of course, water management in our utilities division, water consumption and the need to maintain our parks so that they can be used by all of those user groups. So, you know, these conversations of our environmental sustainability and our resource management and consumption, you know, extends beyond certainly just this division. So January update, really, it was a lot of work to prepare for the launch of a lot of great programs that we're going to be seeing in the spring. And I think the timing around so many of our programs launching around Earth Month in April is very appropriate. So just run through some of the details, so that as you're hearing about these in the community, you can understand what these are all about. So the Green Business Certification Program is continuing. This is a program we've been running for a little over two years now. It is contracted through the Four Corners Office of Resource Efficiency. They are a nonprofit in our community that focuses on energy and water conservation and electric transportation issues. And so this, through this program, funding support from the city, four core staff go out and provide some really high-quality customized advising to businesses in our communities for how they can conserve resources, save money, reduce their utility bills. And participating in this program gets them recognition through additional branding efforts. And it's also opens up the availability for rebates that are, they're only open to participating businesses, again, funded through the city. For the Green Durango Grant, this is in its third year. You could kind of think of this as the green version of the, of the group Durango Creates, so the Renew Grant Program. It's another community grant program designed to incubate and spark sustainability and environmental resiliency efforts in our community, $5,000 grants. We've had some amazing projects over the last few years funded by this. I want to highlight, one of my favorites from last year was Durang Goats, which was a small business here in town that uses goats to manage noxious weeds. So a very sustainable approach to weed management. You know, in some cases can be fire, wildfire mitigation efforts. And so our funding helps support a trailer and some milk for the little baby goats from the herd. So I just think that's wonderful and some really cool impact from that program. Help, again, helping a local business do these sustainable practices. The turf grass replacement program, perhaps you saw the article in the Herald on this program. So this is a grant that the city pursued from the Colorado Water Conservation Board, which is part of the Colorado Department of Natural Resources. So we received $25,000. The city is funding between 15,000 and 20,000, and Visit Durango is funding between 5,000 and 10,000. The reason for the partnership there is because Visit Durango, specifically Waylon Ryan, their sustainability and policy manager has been doing some efforts to connect with hospitality businesses, particularly hotels around their water consumption. So he'd already made those end roads and had those connections, and so this can be another avenue. So hospitality sites would be funded with the match funding from Visit Durango, and then schools, churches, nonprofits, and multifamily residents funded by city programs. And this is working with local landscapers to provide consultation and then a rebate for implementation to replace particularly water-intensive turf grass in areas where alternative landscaping would do. You know, we're not going to replace places where people want to go sit out on the grass and enjoy the grass. That can stay, but you know, the areas where you can be more water efficient with some of that design landscaping. And last but certainly not least is the 2024 program for our e-bike rebate program. 2023 was wildly successful. We had $25,000 from lodgers tax council discretionary funds matched from a $25,000 grant from the Colorado Department of Transportation. For the 24 program, we secured, council appropriated $50,000 in funding from the lodgers taxed council determination funds, and we were secured a $100,000 grant from the Colorado Energy Office. So that program will look really similar. We're working with, partnering with local bike shops to provide additional incentive for people to shop local. And the one distinction here is in order to go after that grant funding, we, it is an income qualified only program. So up to 100% of area media income will qualify to apply for rebates. And I would just say that that reflects the most interest and the use that we got from the 23 program. So the general non-income qualified rebates are going away. But this really helps us serve the people that really show that they need these bikes. And, you know, these are people without licenses, people that really are using these to get around. Last but not least, just want to highlight that as part of the sustainability plan, we do an annual sustainability indicator and action reporting, and increasingly are working to align this with the city's strategic planning effort and indicator reporting. The data from this will be presented at the May Engage Durango Forum. And then in the June study session, we'll provide council another update with some highlight figures of, you know, every year, these key indicators of water consumption, energy consumption in our community, really tracking community-wide sustainability. And with that, questions?
Questions, comments, council? Go ahead, thanks, Gilda.
Thank you, Marty. I'm curious, you know, for e-bike rebates, is there any way to track people who use bikes?
Yes, so we, for the 23 program, have issued a user survey after about four or five months of having that program, and we're planning to do another follow-up survey to continue that data. And yeah, we ask those questions, are you using this? You know, how often would you use this instead of your car to actually commute and get around town versus, you know, just for fun to go up and down the river path, which there's also value in that. We also ask people if this is their primary mode of transportation. And we also ask the average number of miles. So average number of miles per week is 20, about 20 to 25, which is quite a bit. That shows that they're using these to commute regularly. I can get you the exact numbers of the people that are reporting that they are using those for commuting, but I would say it is a majority. And we also have some great comments of people that are telling stories of like, this really changed how they were able to get around our community. And I would also highlight that's because we have pretty great multimodal and bike infrastructure in our community that we continue to invest in.
More question, do you think we have enough bike parking spots and facilities?
That's a great question. I work closely with Devon King and Courtney in the multimodal division to check in on that. There, we've worked on a number of programs to incentivize businesses to install bike racks in front of their businesses, because that's, you know, what we see with bikes is people really do want to bike right to the place where they are. They're not going to go park a bike five blocks away and walk. And so that's a big part of what we do with that outreach. Bike racks are an example of one of the things that can get rebated through the Green Business Certification Program. And again, multimodal has other updates they could give in that regard.
Thank you so much, Marty.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, under Financial Excellence in High Performing Governments, we have our finances monthly report, Devon Schmidt.
Excellent, well, thank you, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Devon Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer, here to report on strategic plan goal area around financial excellence and high performing government. So this will be a January update, as you've seen with some of the other presenters this afternoon. So for January, the financials compared to the annual budget activity is what we would expect, just with various seasonality, and I'll share that through the presentation. So starting off with our general fund, and we do have a couple of noteworthy items. And I did also want to let council know that this is posted, our monthly financial report is posted online for the public under monthly financial reports, so that is available. But we do, for January, we did apply a linear proration for the budget to actuals. And so what that's looking at is about 1/12th of the adopted annual budget. We expect all revenues and expenses to have a level of seasonality. And we will have higher revenue and expenses in the summer where there's higher sales tax revenue, so. And then when we're looking at the sales tax specifically, there is a portion of that that is paid in arrears from the county. They're typically about two months behind on those payments, and so we do have that expectation built in as part of our budget. On our expense analysis, our expected expenses that we would have expected to see was 8%. Our actual expenses were closer to 7%. Also, there is, of course, that just that variation. And as we plan the 2024 budget, as council is aware, we did plan to spend down some of those accrued fund balances that were in the general fund. So looking at the general fund, staff is presenting this as a positive or on track with that seasonal variation in there as well. Yeah.
Oops, excuse me, could I get a definition on the linear proration? What is that?
Sure, so.
Ratio, you know, like financial ratio?
It is, so when you're looking at our budget with the 12 months, so this is just looking at 1/12th of our entire budget. So that's kind of how we're showing that. We do look at the seasonal variations that you will see in there, but this is looking at it in kind of a straight line basis is another way to think about it. So as we move on, oops, sorry, backwards, not forwards. So this is looking at our City of Durango adopted budget to actuals revenues. And so there are a couple noteworthy items that we have on here. In our Grants Fund, we do expect to have additional grants for reimbursements. As those reimbursements are sent off to the agencies, we do receive those reimbursement requests. The Water Fund does have some seasonality. Obviously, if you think about watering and things of that nature, that isn't occurring right now. So you will see higher variations for water revenues in the summer. And then transportation, C dot revenues from 2023 is being received as well.
It looks like Counselor Bosmans has his hand up.
Sure.
And he may have had it up for a little bit on the previous slide. Counselor Bosmans, did you want to ask a question?
That was for this topic, and I appreciate the presentation, and I think the comment that Counselor Yasi made is spot on. Because if we just divide the budget, the annual budget numbers for revenue and expenses by 12, and we compare that on a month-to-month basis, we have really no idea if we are on track or are ahead of schedule or forecast. And I was just wondering, is there any way to have the actual expenses and revenues compared to forecasted monthly expenses and revenues? So using, instead of 1/12th, the actual more realistic forecast on a month-to-month basis, because we have no insight at this point if we're ahead of schedule or not.
We could add in a trend line, if that's something that all of council would appreciate seeing in these months, in these reports moving forward.
Is that something that council appreciates, or?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, okay, great. So moving on then, as we are on to our expenditures for the other funds, sorry. I did want to highlight a couple items on here, so the sewer funds are elevated because of the principal and expense that we pay to the Santa Rita Water Facility. So that is a loan payment that we have twice a year. So that is something that staff expected. In the Vehicle Equipment and Service Fund, large expenses are accrued when bulk orders of vehicles and equipment are purchased and made. And then in the Self Insurance Fund, staff will be doing a true-up for the per employee per month for those items. But I did want to highlight that the self-insurance fund is reflected as positive. And in December of 2023, expense report shows that this is the first time that net revenue in the fund over, for the past two years. So those changes that Bonnie Kling provided to council are, we're seeing them in those dollar impacts now. So that fund is now listed as positive as we do develop that fund balance in there as well. For our revenues, a couple noteworthy items. Revenues for the capital funds, we'll have that final month-end transfer to account for any expenses and any correct revenue allocations from sales tax. And then a portion of that sales tax is received, as we mentioned, in arrears, excuse me. For the capital expenses, obviously, there is quite a bit more work going on in the summer months for these. And so council will be able to start seeing more expenses as the year goes on. Excuse me. Sorry. Finally, some just additional updates. So the Government Finance Officers Association did provide the City of Durango with the award for the annual comprehensive financial report ending in year 2022. The audit is underway and on track to be presented to council in June. And the capital projects strip amendment that was passed, those projects are underway as well. In fleet and facilities, we do have the first F-150s for the police department that are in service. And we did have 41 fleet work orders from January 1st to January 31st. In customer service, I just want to remind council and the public that the food rebate and the utility rebate refunds is open until July 5th, as well as development and training for a new online payment option for our community development. So that's something that finance is working on. And a review of sewer-only utility accounts and the establishment of new procedures, which should lead to an estimated 29,000 of increased revenues for the city and our customer service department. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Just a comment, congrats again on the GFPA award, just a testament to the leadership and the, you know, pretty robust systems and processes that you all put into place to kind of make that happen and really create just incredible financial opportunities for the city, so thank you so much.
I couldn't agree more on GFPA, but I was going to save my comments for the public meeting.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, next up, Mayor and Council, under engaged and collaborative governance, we have our Community Engagement Monthly Report, Clancy Nixon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council, good to be here this afternoon. We had a lot going on this last February. We hosted our Police Department and City Hall forums with, at the end of the month. So on February 27th, we were at the library with approximately 33 attendees. And on the 29th, we decided to go for a virtual setting as well via Zoom. On the 29th, from 11:00 to 1:00, we had 12 registrations, but six attended, but they were all very appreciative of the virtual option to provide their feedback. The forum started off with an informational presentation regarding the exterior plans for the historic high school site. It was followed by a short Q and A, and then we broke out into small group breakout sessions and gave everybody who had attended a chance to. and gave everybody who had attended a chance to own a bit of the project and discuss in small groups, three different questions that we asked for specific feedback about. So the three questions that we asked were, what would you like to see in that north backyard plaza area? Do you feel the alleyway on the east side of the property is worthy of additional investment to improve? And what else do you feel this project needs to be a point of community pride, if anything? I'll say that for the first question of what would you like to see in that north backyard plaza area? A lot of folks pointed to food truck pads, the need for shade, and then event space for farmers markets, craft fairs, et cetera. With our second question about the alleyway, there was overwhelming support for the improvements to the alleyway. And then for the third question, what else do you feel like this project needs? Most folks said just community space in general and public meeting space. So those were kind of the responses that we got. I will say that the surveys that we sent out, we're still collecting some of those, but all of the respondents 100% said that they would attend an engagement event through the city again in the future. And 100% also said that they would recommend it to a friend to attend. So pretty exciting. We also had last month met with our Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Focus Group. So that wrapped up just last week. We met twice on the 21st and the 28th for a total of three hours at the library. There were six participants and we had small group discussions about our drafted Indigenous Land Acknowledgement and some action plans that we threw out as well. I would say that was a huge success. I was the facilitator for that as well. And we've got really, really quality, high quality feedback from the group and made sure to carve out a safe space for something that could be very emotionally triggering for some folks. So I would say that that was a very successful endeavor as well. And we're looking forward to, the DEI cross functional team is looking forward to presenting kind of the findings and an updated drafted plan to you all in the near future. The Engage Durango website is nearly ready. We're hoping by next week, we will have something up and running on, on our website. So we're in the pre-launch. If you can see that, there's a little glimpse of it there. And we're starting to move projects from our current connected engage website over to this new social pinpoint software. So it's going well. It's very easy to use. Excited to, to roll that out soon. Some additional engagement efforts, I just want to highlight just a few of those. You can read them. But March 13th, that mock city council meeting is coming up 12 to 1:30 right here with Animus High School students. There'll be about 65 of them here. They're very excited and working diligently on putting an agenda together. And then we also have our Engage Durango forum coming up on March 26th from 5 to 6:30 at the library where Tony Bakary will be presenting about the airport. So we are looking forward to that as well. And then March 14th, we also have Durango's, our downtown's next step meeting from 5:30 to 7:00 at Fort Lewis College Center for Innovation in the main mall. So that's also going on. Just a couple of highlights here with our social media engagement. You can see that our total impressions is way up 141%. I'd like to highlight the LinkedIn impression specifically. That's a 477% increase. And I think that is in large part due to our human resources efforts on that platform. And Kayla, who's sitting right here. So Kayla Grimm, I know has been working hard on that as well. And then looking at January and February for just total page views in 2024, we're well above what we were at in 2023. So big kudos to the Public Information Office there. Any questions?
Mayor and Council, I just want to take a moment to give Clancy a big shout out, just kind of coming into the organization. She's really taken control of some of our community engagement in our forums and has changed them to be way more interactive than they probably have been before. So just job well done and thank you for coming in and helping us.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Other comments, questions?
I do. I agree because I've been going to the Engage Durango forums and I do like the format where you do the presentation, then you have the breakout sessions. And I think with the breakout sessions, it gives the, the public a chance to interact with some of the staff and people who have knowledge on these topics where they wouldn't come into the office and ask. So I think that's really a good outreach tool. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Some of the feedback we did get about the breakout sessions with the forum as well is just community members interacting with other community members that they may not interact with in their day to day life. So they are appreciative of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Wonderful.
Moved to that pretty fast, faster than I had, had anticipated, but we'll definitely kind of continue to look at the time it's, it kind of starts to regularly end. And if we need to make adjustments, do so.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate it. The updates to council is very effective. And thank you all to staff for taking the time. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved?
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.